Good evening. Hello, Mr. Cathcart, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Mr. Disler.
Simone, can you hear me as well?
Thank you.
And Simone, I will need access later to share my screen for the ethics presentation if you, when that moment comes, if you make sure I can have that, that'd be great.
Yes, sharing is allowed.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much.
I gotta press down?
Yeah.
You have to keep holding. Oh, I gotta keep hold. That was a dry run. The time is 7:31. I'd like to call the Ridgefield Park Board of Education Board Meeting to order. Can we salute the flag? Can I please have a roll call?
Mr. Cathcart?
I'm here.
Mr. Craft?
Here.
Mr. Fytros?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. McNeil?
Here.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Les?
Here.
Mrs. Orth? Here. And President Martin?
Here.
Others, President Superintendent Dr. Angela Bender, Business Administrator Carrie Grapstein-Monitor Thomas Egan, and Board Attorney David Disler.
We have no minutes to approve. As far as communications, we, the board received a letter from Jenny Schmidt today regarding the superintendent's search, and we also received an email from Ms. Malou also today, also about the superintendent's search and other decisions in the district. Yes, please read the open public meetings.
Okay, the Open Public Meetings Act statement. "The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Ridgefield Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bergen Record, Star Ledger Municipal Building, Board of Education Offices, and District Website. Public participation instructions. Public participation will be conducted both in person and virtually through Zoom. All public will be muted throughout the meeting. Public participation comments are limited to five minutes. The public will be able to both speak and be seen by the board when participating virtually or telephonically via Zoom. Individuals participating virtually that wish to make comments during public participation will need to raise their hand by clicking the blue hand icon at the bottom of their Zoom window. Individuals participating by telephone that wish to make comments during public participation will need to hit star nine on their telephone to raise their hand. The Business Administrator Board Secretary will then unmute individuals one at a time to speak in the order that their hand was raised."
Thank you. I will start with committee reports. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Cooney?
Yes, buildings and grounds, we met on February 16th. Excuse me, we discussed several things, including town permits. When do we need to take them? Who takes them? Who pays for them? Also, we talked about capital projects. Couple of items in schools, we discussed the pipe bursting, the heating for seven of the rooms. Those rooms were supposed to be put back to use with the staff and students by the end of this month. And we talked about a pest problem that has been addressed. Parents did write letters to board members. That is definitely not going on deaf ears. That's being addressed. And we also talked about the kitchen and the science rooms in the junior, senior high school. Got to see some of those pictures. It's going really nice. And they're full steam ahead. There's going to be some asbestos removal also in the high school. And all of the rooftop units are currently being replaced right now. We discussed a little bit about rod grants, which are regularly operating districts. These are, these are priority level changes that we're looking to make. And we also discussed the size of our district. We're waiting for the capacity study from Solutions. That's the architect. And then we touched base on the possibility of relocating next year's ESY program in order to get this work done in Lincoln. We have not set a date for the next meeting, but we are working on it.
Thank you, Mr. Cooney. Policy, Ms. Rodriguez?
Hello, the policy committee met on February 23rd, 2023. Two, two, three, two, three. We started 8:00 PM and ended at 10:25. Participant included Dr. Angela Bender, Superintendent of Schools, Mrs. Carrie Grapstein, Business Administrator Board Secretary, myself, Dr. Martinez, Trustee Michelle Orth, and Trustee Velez. We just, a discussion was held regarding Resolution 12.01, Use the Facility A, C, F, and G that was previously tabled on 2/15/23 at our last board meeting. We had also a discussion regarding District Regulation 7510 and District Policy 7510. We went into lengthy, lengthy discussion regarding organization and individuals using school facilities. Discussion was held regarding limited space for the summer. Our buildings are in dire need of repair. Usage of the school facility will be made available for community purposes. And you can refer to District Regulation 7150, Use of Facility, provided that such use does not interfere with the educational program of the school district. We also briefly discussed Alert Policy Revision and Alert 229. And some of the policies are presented in tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Finance and Insurance, Mr. Gomes?
Finance Committee did not meet since the last meeting, but we do have a meeting schedule coming up soon.
Faculty and Programs, Trustee Craft?
Same with Faculty and Programs. We're scheduled to meet on Tuesday, March 7th at 6:30, at 6:00 PM.
Negotiations, Ms. McNeil?
Thank you. The Negotiations Committee has been very active in the past couple of weeks. Trustees Fytros, Velez, and President Martinez, along with Dr. Bender, Ms. Grapstein, Mr. Disler, Ms. Wright, met on the 22nd to review the negotiation process and status of the RPEA contract, which we are currently negotiating. We met again, the total group excluding Ms. Wright, with the RPEA and NJEA reps to begin negotiations again, or I should say to resume negotiations. It was via Zoom due to the weather, but a productive meeting overall. The committee is working very diligently to come to agreement with the RPEA in order to have our teachers have their contract. And we trust that the RPEA will negotiate in good faith as well. We've committed to next steps, including an in-person negotiation on March 22nd.
Thank you. Personnel Trustee Orth?
So the Personnel Committee met on February 22nd via Zoom, present were Ms. Craft, Mr. Cooney, President Martinez, Dr. Bender, Ms. Grapstein, and myself. We discussed update on open positions in the district. There are several open transportation positions. We discussed the need for a transportation analysis to determine the future of the transportation program. I refer this to the Finance and Insurance Committee for follow-up. The committee expressed a desire to review personnel-related agenda items at the subcommittee meetings, similar to other committee meetings, as opposed to just at the agenda meeting. Dr. Bender stated that this is not always possible, as deadlines for the agenda are often later than the date for the subcommittee meeting. However, it was agreed that this would be the practice going forward where possible. We discussed current advertising and hiring practices and other human resource procedures, including verification of certifications and licensures. We discussed the need for a dedicated human resource professional. We discussed the need for a current organizational chart and a review of position descriptions with the goal of creating a communications protocol document that can be utilized by parents and teachers and community members based on the type of questions that they have. Tentative date for the next meeting is Monday, March 13th. The Personnel Committee also met an additional time on February 21st via Zoom. Including, in that meeting was the Little Ferry representative. We were discussing logistics of the superintendent's search. Present were Ms. Craft, Mr. Cooney, Mr. Fytros, President Martinez, and myself. Also present were Dr. Monica Brown and Ms. Karen Shaw of HYA. We established a timeline for the search and discussed logistics related to the search for superintendent. Over the next two days, Dr. Brown interviewed all non-conflicted board members and finalized the virtual focus group survey. In-person and Zoom focus group meetings are scheduled with various stakeholders, including teachers, administrators, parent groups, students, and community members. HIA will be meeting with representatives of the student government on Tuesday during school hours. There are also two community member focus group town halls scheduled for next week. Wednesday, March 8th at 6 o'clock. At the junior, senior high school, there will be an in-person opportunity to participate. And next Thursday, March 9th at 6:00 PM, there is a virtual town hall via Zoom. If neither of these options is convenient for you, you may still participate via the electronic survey. Please look for further information about these meetings, which will be sent via School Messenger tomorrow, and will be available on the district website. The board strongly encourages participation in this process, so please participate in whatever way is most convenient for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to presentations. We have two presentations today. The first one is by our auditors. Yours?
Thank you, Board President. Alex Beres from Lurch, Vincy, and Bliss. We completed your June 30th, 2022 audit. Your audit report contains three opinions, all of which are unmodified. Unmodified opinion reflects that it is a clean audit. There are no material weaknesses, and there are no significant issues. Usually we go over your general fund, fund balance, which is your operating fund. At year-end, June 30th, '22, your fund balance is approximately 8 million, of which there are restrictions. The first being your capital reserve. Capital reserve is 4.9 million, of which 500,000 is currently using your '22, '23 budget. And that is restricted for capital projects. Can't be used for operating expenses. Your next reserve is your maintenance reserve, which is restricted for your maintenance projects, and that is approximately 1.5 million. Your year-end encumbrances are approximately 711,000, and those are your purchase orders that were committed at year-end where the goods and services were not rendered and rolled into your subsequent year. And your max one and a half percent unassigned free fund balance is $930,000. As far as your recommendations, there were three recommendations this year. No repeats. There were, the recommendations that are on the audit report, we consider not to be material weaknesses. We consider them to be general recommendations. And on tonight's agenda is a corrective action plan that will address those recommendations. If there's any questions about fund balance or recommendations, I can take those at this time.
I do have a comment about their recommendations. I'm glad to hear that you say that they're not significant, because I was a little concerned that this year we have three instead of one or zero. But I'm discussing that with a B. And one I was concerned about is the encumbrance funds, and she explained, you know, there's a little bit of a misunderstanding of what occurred there.
Yeah, that first recommendation regarding the open purchases at year-end, it's just a matter of, you know, classifying them in the right categories. You know, whether it's in accounts payable, which means that the services and goods are rendered, whether it's an encumbrance, and that signifies if the goods and services are not rendered at year-end. And if there's any, you know, purchase orders out there that aren't valid, that should be canceled at year-end.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? I'm wondering if if Mr. Egan would like to speak on, I know it's going a little bit out of order, but I wonder if Mr. Egan would like to speak on the audit, or would you like to wait for the State Monitor's report?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think it's, we're talking about the audit. Let's just talk about it. And it's for, obviously, the board knows, and just for the public too. The district has come a long way in rectifying the financial issues. And as the audit put it completely, the, there's only three in which I classify as minor adjustments, but things that should be, should be done. This auditing firm has done their usual outstanding job to point out weaknesses, and then also at the same time to show what some of the good things that this district has done. Considering what happened in the past, I'll just, in my two cents into it, is that for the public, there is no money missing. There's no money misappropriated, and there's no money that's really been spent outside of the budget into last-minute expenditures. And they, and Ridgefield Park should be proud that they're in a position that they have reserves to move forward. As was mentioned before, the buildings are old. They're gonna need work. And it's happy to report and see that the money is there to do that without, without at this point in time, without going out for a referendum to put an additional burden on the taxpayers. We've, and I use the word we, have moved forward and have have been very good overlooking, looking over the district finances. And the district should be very proud of what they do, what they did. Kudos to the business office headed by our Business Administrator. And once again, the things are going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. And thank you for your presentation and for your work. Thank you.
And I think it's appropriate to say thank you to Carrie for all the hard work in putting this budget, you know, and getting us to this state. I know it's not an easy, not an easy process.
It's really been a team effort, so I thank my team as well.
Thank you.
I second that.
There was clapping in case the public didn't hear that. So I think we'll move to the Board Ethics Training by Mr. Disler.
Thank you very much. I'm just, it's okay with everyone. I'm gonna share my screen so they can see the PowerPoint. Just let me know if you can see it. Can everyone see the PowerPoint on the screen?
Yes.
Perfect. So thank you again for letting my firm do your ethics training. I'll spend about 15, 20 minutes going over a number of topics. So I'm gonna start just very briefly going over what we call conflicts of interest on the school ethics, then move on to the Code of Ethics for school board members. The law itself, I'm gonna move rather quickly, because I find the most interesting part for the board members is the hypotheticals, right? You know, we can talk about the law all day, but how it actually applies to is far more important. So I'll spend a lot of the time going through hypotheticals on what we call the hot button issues, the issues that we see most frequently that board members run into. If you have any questions at any time, feel free to stop me. I can make the sentence as interactive as the board would like. So, moving on to what we call the School Ethics Act Code of Ethics. So this applies not just to board members, but to your administrators. These are the, what we call the more obvious conflicts, right? These are very based on finances. So I'm gonna go through rather quickly, and I should say, I didn't give the board this presentation. You'll see very obviously why I didn't give this to the board in advance, because there's a lot of hypotheticals with answers, but I will email this to the board along with the School Ethics Act after this presentation, just so you have the law itself and all the hypotheticals. I do encourage the board to take some time after this meeting. Just go through and read the conflict of interest, read the School Ethics Act, and if you then have any further questions after this presentation, please reach out to my office. So conflict of interest, again, this part of the School Ethics Act, very financial-based. These are the ones that I think are very apparent to board members, right? So the first one, no board member shall have an interest in a business organization or engage in any business transaction or professional activity. B, you should not secure unwarranted privileges, advantages, or employment for yourself, your immediate family, or others, right? So these are, again, financial, very apparent. You should not have any direct or indirect financial involvement that might be expected to impair your objectivity or independent judgment. You should not undertake any employment or service which could, which might reasonably expect to prejudice your independence or judgment. Again, very obvious on its face. You can't take out any loans, solicit gifts, any blue contribution service promise or future employment. You cannot utilize for your own benefit any information not generally available to the public. And I'm not gonna go through all of these, but I just want to highlight some. No elected man shall be prohibited from making inquiry for information on behalf of constituents. So, again, those are very apparent. I encourage the board to read it. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on it. Where I do want to tend time on conflicts of interest, this comes up across the state, and we've been asked to give opinions, so we decided to actually include this as part of our presentation this year. So when does a board member have a conflict, and what do they do? So if a board member has a member of their immediate family or themselves work in the district, well, what are they allowed to do? Well, they cannot participate in evaluations. They can't participate in any board action discussion related to superintendent's employment. They can't participate in negotiations, and they can't vote on the final contract. So this, again, is if you have a member of your immediate family who works in the district. And then the second question we get is, well, my immediate family doesn't work in the district, but they work in another school district. Do I have a conflict? And the answer is, to some extent, yes. To some extent, no. So what they cannot do, you cannot, if you have a member of your immediate family working in another school district in the same statewide union, you can't participate in negotiations. But as a board member, you are allowed to vote on the final contract and the MOU, and can't participate in issues related to the superintendent. That's if you, sorry, the first one is if you are a board member working in another school and are part of the statewide union, if you have an immediate family member, same prohibitions, except for related to the superintendent, obviously. So Code of Ethics, I'll spend a little more time on. So this just applies to board members. And what I will say with the Code of Ethics, the where board members get in trouble is what I will describe as the overzealous board member, right? We have a board member who is well-intentioned, but goes a little beyond what their role is as a board member. And again, most of the cases that we read, we're not talking about the conflicts of interest where someone's stealing money. A lot of time, these are well-intentioned board members who just go a little too far. And so we'll give a lot of example where that line is, and I recommend the board to pay attention, because I will be giving a lot of hypotheticals. So we'll start with C. I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Right? So you're limited to that role. And then CD and F are run the same. I will carry out my responsibilities not to administer the school, but together with my fellow board members, see that they're well-run. And that's really one of the highlights of the Code of Ethics that you'll hear repeatedly. I will carry out my responsibilities not to administer the school, but make sure they're well-run. And then that flows nicely into E, that I recognize my authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises, nor take any private actions that may compromise the board. And we'll see that one, a good number in the hypo, no private action that may compromise the board. We move on to G. Again, this one's a little more self-evident, but it comes up time to time. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed, would nearly injure individuals or the schools. Okay, these two are important, so I will highlight them. I will support and protect school personnel in proper forms of the duties. And then J, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrator Officer in this district. That is your superintendent. So that's them in a nutshell. So now I'm gonna start getting, kind of delving into the actual, what we call hot button issues here. Again, a lot of hypotheticals, a lot, and I should mention all of the hypo's that I will give. Again, a lot of hypotheticals, a lot of, and I should mention all of the hypo's that I will give today are based on real cases. So a lot gets asked of us regarding communications. Right? So I'll start with internal communications, right? Boardman, board member communications. I will begin by reminding the board of their obligations under the Open Public Meetings Act. So as we know, under the Open Public Meetings Act. I believe at the beginning, well, I know at the beginning of your meeting, a nice statement is read, I believe by Carrie, talking about the Open Public Meetings Act, right? And the purpose of that is the public has the right to present during all phases, the deliberation, policy making form, uh, policy formation and decision making of a public body. The important thing then is the definition of what a meeting is. Essentially what a meeting is, it's twofold. One, it's when a majority of the board members are talking about board business. So there's nothing wrong with a majority of board being at a football game. But if then a majority of the board goes to concession stand and starts talking about board business, that becomes theoretically a public meeting, right? You have a quorum and you're talking about board business. The public has the right to see that. So again, I think most boards understand this intuitively, but where boards tend to get in trouble is when they start communicating, not in person electronically. So what I will say is one way flow of communication is completely acceptable, right? So before this meeting, I assumed the entire board got the board packet. That's fine. That is what we call a one way flow of information, right? A committee, a committee chair can email the full board, a committee report. That's a one way flow of communication. Where boards get in trouble most frequently is what I, what I've seen is the reply all right? A board, a committee chair emails a committee report, then someone replies all with a question and the committee chair then replies all with an answer. At that point, we have a flow of information. We have a majority of the board on that email exchange and the public has the right to see that. So some advice. As we as we get to this next slide. So when practical, do not include a majority of the board, right? That's why you have committees. You should be emailing the committees. If you have to share information with the full board, I always recommend doing one of two things. Either making very clear and very bold at the top, do not reply all. Right? And I've seen a lot of board presidents do that pretty frequently that they say, do not reply all to this email, reply to me individually or reply to the boardman individually. And when that, if that system fails, some boards have gone to the extent of just blind copying all the board members. This way it prevents anyone from replying all. So now external communications, right? You as a board member want to comment on an issue that is before the board or an issue before the state. And the question is, what are those limitations? So when you read the School Ethics Commission's cases, they will talk a lot about how a board member does not lose their First Amendment right. And then they will say how the board member violated the School Ethics Act despite the First Amendment. So I will sell that the board, US board members still retain your First Amendment right. But it is certainly compromised because it still must comply with the School Ethics Act. So what does that mean? So the first two we'll talk about at the next case, but anytime you are making a statement. Right? You're making a statement that related to the board. It's pretty clear that you have to do so to make clear that you're not doing so on behalf of the board and you're not doing so as a board member. You're doing so as a private citizen, as a parent or the like. And then three and four are right out of the School Ethics Act. And this is where board members tend to get in trouble where they say, I have a First Amendment right. I can make this statements. And then they still run to issues with the School Ethics Act. So one, as a board member, you have a higher burden. You have to make sure if you are making statements concerning board business alike, that it is accurate information. And number two, and this is the tricky one, and when board members ask me, should I make a statement? Again, my job is to tell you what you legally can do, but my recommendation is as a board member, you can run into issue. It becomes tricky when you're commenting concerning the board, even if all the proper process. You run into number four and ensure that your action does not compromise the board, right? And that's, that's very broad. That's very vague. How do you know when you make a statement whether you're compromising the board or not? And there are a lot of cases we can discuss with where that comes into play. So let's talk about the first two now. Identify support member and because the post is not authorized or written on behalf of the board. So the rest of this presentation is all going to be real cases, real hypotheticals, right? So I like to do if the board member did a good job, right? No violation, thumbs up. If you think the board member violated the act, give me a thumbs down. So real case from about a year and a half ago. This went, this commissioner of education case, it kind of took out one surprise. So here we had a board member write an op ed in the local paper endorsing four candidates and advocating against one candidate. Not surprisingly, the candidate that the board member advocated against, not surprisingly filed an ethics complaint against the board member. And what the ethics complaint was about is that the board member did not use proper language, making clear that he was not a board member. And that he was not writing on behalf of the board. And this was the disclaimer used. The author is writing this endorsement on his own personal behalf. His opinions are his own. Do we think that endorsement is appropriate? The author is writing this endorsement on his own personal behalf. His opinions are his own. If you want to give a thumbs up, thumbs down, take a look at it for a second. So I'm starting to see some thumbs. So this, uh, this came as a shocker to many in the industry. People thought this, this was a pretty good, this person went out and tried making clear that, look, this was not my own endorsement. This is my endorsement, my own personal behalf and the like. Where did this board member go wrong? So the School Ethics Act made clear that the purpose of this claim is to prevent reasonable confusion among the public about whether the board member's statement is about a private citizen or as a public official. Disclaimer must note that the view is not your own, but also, and this is where the board member made a mistake, make clear the views expressed were not those of the board. Right? So they're my own and they're not on behalf of the board. And because this board member failed in their disclaimer to use number two. The School Ethics Commission found that there was a violation. So the School Ethics Commission then goes on and say, well, it's up to the board to make a disclaimer that fits their needs. We're not going to judge each individual one as long as they meet the criteria. They then drop a footnote to another case. This that says along the lines of, well, this case found that the disclaimer was appropriate. But we then pulled up that case and this is disclaimer. This is the disclaimer where the School Ethics Commission has endorsed and says appropriate. The following statements are made in my capacity as a private citizen, not my capacity as a board member. These statements are also not representative of the board or its individual members and solely represent my personal views. So again, I don't, it's not a recommendation to make statements, but you certainly have the First Amendment right. As long as you meet that test that I talked about earlier, that doesn't compromise the board and like. But if you are going to make a statement, please, again, the only disclaimer that's been endorsed by the School Ethics Commission is this one. So if there's one thing you want to write down today, and again, I'm going to send this presentation to everyone, I would highlight this statement. So if you're going to make a statement, write it down and make sure you use it because this is appropriate disclaimer language. All right. Second hypothetical. A board member shares an article on her personal Facebook page regarding new legislation that will impact schools in New Jersey. Above the article, the board member includes a boo image, right? This little GIF that's booing. No other language is included. I'll let everyone review this. Do we think the board member violated or did not violate the School Ethics? Okay, I'm starting to see some thumbs. So this one is okay, no violation. So here's what I will say, when we talk with the First Amendment. Your rights are restricted when you're talking about something dealing with the board. But when you're talking about legislation that impacts the whole state, right? Something that is not presently before this board. No disclaimer language is needed and you still retain all of your First Amendment rights. So if something that is happening in Trenton that you disagree with, not before the board, you can comment without issue. So stay while it's not issued for the board.
David, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Given all the the issues and the hot topics in the state, wouldn't you be even though you're saying I'm a private citizen, being on the board and speaking against something that's coming down from the state, doesn't that give the impression that aren't you undermining the board in some way, the functioning of the board?
So you could, you're right. That's already compromising the board potentially, right? So I would certainly include, still include anytime you're commenting, I still would include that disclaimer language, just as my recommendation. So it's clear that you're not acting me off the board. But if it's general legislation that just impacts the whole state and not right, because there's legislation that you can be commenting on that impacts the board specifically. Then you probably want to steer clear. But if it's more general legislation, right, that, you know, whoever the governor picks as the next commissioner of education, you may endorse that, you may not. You have the right to comment on that generally.
What about something that gets hypothetical masking? And and as a board member, you were just saying, I'm against masking. I think this legislation is bad. The state's doing a bad job. And then masking is on our agenda.
That's why, right? So masking is a great example because, well, you may have a view about Trenton. That's something that you have a specific policy on. Right? And that's something that your administration, again, not right now, but in the past was working on. And so generally commenting that if it's then foreseen as not supporting your administration, supporting your policies, that's something that is before the board. So even though that might be a trend, that's also before the board and that's where that distinction gets in.
Thank you.
No problem. And please keep the questions coming as I go through these because these are very helpful to everyone. All right. Here we have a board member post on his personal Facebook page, which includes the proper disclaimer. The post states the district would be better off if the business administrator wasn't so cheap and didn't get so much enjoyment out of cutting costs. So what do we think?
It's just a lie.
Again, these are not my hypo's. These are coming from real cases. All right, I will. So this is a violation. I will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. I will let everyone know if they feel uncomfortable that I did give Carrie the heads up that this one would be coming. And she did get a good laugh out of it and hopefully the same one tonight in public. So again, this is an important one. I will support and protect school personnel in proper forms of the duties. This means the board member cannot take deliberate action which undermines, opposes or compromises or harms school personnel in the proper forms of the duties, right? So if you were making public statements that have the ability to undermine or compromise school personnel, that is a violation of the act. Okay, addressing concerns. Here we have a board member receives a private message from a middle school parent. The parent says he believes his son is being bullied at school by another student and asks for the board member's help. The board member sends a message to several parents at the middle school to see whether there's any truth to these allegations. Okay, starting to come up. Seeing some thumbs down. I'm happy to see that. So this is twofold, right? One, I will hold all, we'll hold confidential all matters painted to schools, right? So a parent reached out to you with some confidential information that a board member then shared it. And then this is an important one. I will for all complaints to superintendent. Right? So as a board member, it's not uncommon. Right? That members of the community look to you as board members for assistance. And a lot of times these were just personal issues with complaints. You as a board member are required to then provide that to the superintendent. That is your ethical obligation. You don't investigate, you provide to the superintendent and then let the superintendent take their required action. So here we have a similar one. A board member receives a call from a parent claiming a teacher made inappropriate comments during your daughter's class. The board member emails the superintendent with this information. The board member then calls the principal to request the issue be investigated. This is a tough one. I'm starting to see one thumb. Anyone else? Okay, starting to see the thumbs coming. So again, I will for all complaints to the superintendent. So again, I talked about how the School Ethics Commission can be a well intentioned board member who can be overzealous. This is an important case. And the reason I say it's an important one and the School Ethics Commission went into detail on this case. So where did the board member go wrong? So your obligation is to report it just to the superintendent. I understand why a board member would then call the principal about this to notify them. The reason this is important is again, chain of command is very important in school district as we know. And when a board member then calls the principal to to start the investigation, that could lead to some form of conflicts, right? The superintendent may want to designate someone else to do the investigation. The superintendent may be the believe the principal was conflicted for some reason and couldn't do the investigation. You then can have two separate investigations being started. Or the superintendent can believe that investigation isn't appropriate in those circumstances and then one is started anyway. And so the important thing when complaints come in, your job as a board member and only job is to provide superintendent. If you go beyond that, you can run into some issues with the School Ethics Act. Okay, great case. After hearing incorrect gossip spreading through the community about an employee, a board member posted on a local Facebook page, a memorandum that was prepared by the superintendent and emailed to board members. The memorandum stated it became necessary yesterday to remove a staff member. The staff member is currently hospitalized for treatment of medical condition. Upon further medical evaluation, additional information will be made available. The board president was immediately advised, as was our attorney in district physician. The matter was handled in accordance with the contract and recommended guidelines. So this one's a little worrier. I'll give everyone a minute to take, catch my breath and everyone read it. Yeah, so I'm starting to see the thumbs down, right? So again, private action that compromises the board. Confidential all matters between schools and most importantly, support personnel. So here we had a staff member go out on leave. And again, rumors were circulating. So I don't want to say well intentioned board member here because this, out of all the cases, this board member was suspended for six months for doing this, you know, posting a private memorandum from the superintendent, which was clear as day that it was meant to be confidential. And which also then revealed some information about a staff member. But again, rumors were spreading. The board member thought that they were doing the right thing by stepping in and giving information to the public. But again, you as a board member obtain confidential information. It is at times frustrating when you see rumors throughout the communities that you think are not accurate. But you have to be also be mindful of your obligations in the School Ethics Act. You have to hold certain matters confidential. You have to support personnel and not take private action that may compromise the board. Okay, preparation for board meetings. Here at the board's upcoming meeting, it will be voting on the purchase of new basketball equipment. A board member who obviously started on his high school basketball team, after getting permission from the superintendent, enters the gym to test out whether new basketball hoops and equipment are needed. What do we think? Okay, starting to see some thumbs. So this one's okay, right? You as board members, right? People ask, what is our role? I will confine my board action to policy, policymaking, planning and appraisal. So you as a board have the right to make informed decisions, right? So when something is before you on your agenda, you have the right to make informed decisions. What does that mean? You can ask questions about it. You can get additional information. As long as it is before you and you were voting on it, you got the right to get information. So here, and this is actually based on several different cases. Where board members were worried about equipment, whether it be lockers, whether it be windows, whether it be basketball equipment, and they just wanted to take a look at it. Now, you have to keep in mind, you as a board member cannot simply just walk into a school. You still need to get proper, go through the proper channels, one to get authorization from the building principal or superintendent to make sure that you're allowed to enter that building and go look at that equipment. But you do as a board can test out the equipment and the like to make a proper informed decision. Okay, interactions with staff. So same example. While shooting some hooks, the board member can't believe how easy it was to walk into the gym and grab the basketball bin. Believing this is security risk, he immediately finds a custodian and tells him to lock up the equipment in a closet. Starting to see the thumbs. So again, this is a violation. This is an important one. I will carry my responsibility not to administer schools, but together with my fellow board, make sure they are well run, right? You cannot give instructions to staff. That one is clear as day. When you need information, you go to the superintendent and follow the proper chain of command, but you should never be giving instructions directly to staff. Again, here we have a great well intentioned board member. So here we have a recently elected board member vouched to improve the education in the school district. Needing some additional information, she emails a school secretary asking that she make copies of standardized testing data and have it ready for her to pick up later in the day. Again, here we have a nice violation, right? So it's one thing if you want information, where do you go? You go to the superintendent. The superintendent will then can delegate appropriately, but you should never be emailing any staff member, not the superintendent and asking them to do anything. Again, if you need information to make an informed decision, you email the superintendent and let the superintendent delegate accordingly. But here the issue is they emailed specifically a school secretary. I believe it is in the business office in this example, instead of going in following the proper chain of command. And we, just to give background about why this is important. Again, you as board members, a lot of by members, most employees see you as almost their employer, right? And so when you are emailing someone beyond the superintendent, they may think I have to do something or my job could be at risk. I may get non renewed. And it's that pressure that the School Ethics Commission wants to avoid. And that's why, again, they want you to go to the superintendent and rather than any specific staff members. Most board members will never think of this. They think they're, again, these are well intentioned board members in many of these cases. They they're usually friendly with this individual, don't think they feel pressured. But again, a lot of times staff members, after the fact report, I actually did feel pressured and didn't think I should be doing this. Okay. Um, another great case. The director of special services recommended the superintendent to transfer and demotion of certain staff members, including a The director of special services recommended the superintendent to transfer and demotion of certain staff members, including a board member's future son-in-law. Upon running into the director, the board member questioned the director about the personnel actions and whether he had followed the proper procedures in making the recommendations. So again, this was a case that had a lot of issues for a lot of reasons, clear violation here. The important point I want to make, this is a pretty obvious case, but your recommendations will either be coming from the superintendent or in some circumstances, maybe the BA. And as we know, the superintendent will always get more information, right? So a lot of times the superintendent will delegate certain decisions or recommendations to her from staff members, right, for special education. It might be your director of special services. For some personnel, it might be the principals of your school. But it, in the end, it is the superintendent's recommendation. So if you have questions about that recommendation, you go to the superintendent. And if the superintendent feels that they need to get additional information from the director, from principals alike, the superintendent will do so. But you as board members are supposed to go to the superintendent and let the superintendent make the decision how to properly delegate. So that is everything I have for you today. Does anyone, well, again, thank you for letting me present, but does anyone have any questions?
Uh, David, thank you very much. I was hoping to give an example where a board member who was also a parent might have gotten into some trouble and how that would occur.
So where we tend to see board members as parent is in the either PTA or volunteering. So for the most part, I will say that board members have the right to be members of the PTA. That's not an issue. They do have the right at times to be in leadership positions in the PTA, although they can, that you can tend to run into some conflicts there. So we certainly, you can be a member of PTA. You can be an officer, although when you become an officer, it becomes a little it. There becomes some issues, you become issues before the PTA can get brought for the board, the board members recuse themselves. And the other issue being that leadership in the PTA have a lot of interaction with staff. And so the other issue is sometimes with volunteering, you are allowed to volunteer as a parent in the district. It's just you have to limit your volunteership to, um, you have to make sure you're not giving direction to staff or receiving direction and the like. Right? So there's cases on that. Again, there's a lot of gray area when it comes to volunteership. We recommend if you want to volunteer in the class, want to work, become leadership in the PTA, reach out to our office and we can kind of walk you through what's the, the do's and the don'ts. But those are, I think, the two areas where we see the most issues with parents. I will say that under the school ethics commission, a board acting board member cannot sue the district. So there are times specific in the special education realm where a parent will take legal action against the board, right? It's not uncommon that a special education parent files a due process petition or the like. Once that goes into litigation, the board member has to step down from the board. Any other specific issues you were thinking of?
No, thank you.
No problem. And again, if any specific hypotheticals come up, you can always feel free to reach out to our office because we're here to help in this regard, right? We understand that you as board members are volunteers. These issues are not always black and white. And when we live in the world of gray, we're happy to help as best we can.
Berlin, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. So a board member who's a parent um, can volunteer in the, in other organizations that's connected to the school?
So
or the district?
They can so long as an issue is not before the board, right? So a lot of times PTAs, and then they have to recuse themselves on those issues.
There are PTAs and there's us, there are other organizations that are sponsored. Not as an officer.
So we, I, again, officers as a member usually, right? So it's not uncommon for board members to be members of the PTA. You know, the example that comes up frequently is, you know, I, I want to specifically in the younger grades, you know, they have parents come in and read to the class. And that's been found to be entirely acceptable, right? So PTA runs, you know, homeroom, parent comes as a parent volunteer, reads the class. That's completely acceptable because again, you're not giving or taking instruction. You're just there to be a parent.
So a parent can't be a member of an organization in the district.
Parent can be a member.
Can't, yes, can be a member.
A board member can be a member in an organization, yes. And if, if there's more specific ones, right, if the boards, if it's something where the board is giving money to or things like that, we can discuss. But for the most part, we're thinking PTA. And the answer is yes. And then it really comes down to what you're doing in the PTA that what those issues are. And that's where the gray area comes into play and we're happy to walk through whatever, you know, if there's a specific event you want to go or lead or the like. That's where we come in to say, just let us know what that event is, what you're going to be doing. We can at least walk you through the do's and the don'ts.
Any other questions? Um, Mr. Disler, I just want to make sure that you knew that, uh, the questions that we did get wrong were really on the overly conservative side. Uh, none of them were on the other side.
No, I, and I'm not, these examples were not, again, these are all pull for cases. Um, and I do this presentation across the state, so this, none of this should be seen as directed at any, and this specific board. This is a um, a universal presentation that I do pretty frequently.
Thank you. Uh, we have no other questions. I guess we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you again, Mr. Disler. Thank you, Alex, for presenting the audit. Uh, before I begin, I want to give a big shout out to the parents. Yesterday we had our delayed opening. It was very successful, went smoothly. I am really pleased. The only thing I want to just remind parents is that uh, there are no staff members dedicated to watching students prior to the arrival at 10 a.m. and cautiously uh, come, release your students with ma- with caution. Make sure they're not crossing streets and, and go according to how we have uh, crossing guards there. Big shout out, Mr. Runrose, DPW. I need to thank again, and I appreciate the communications I had uh, with Mr. Flynn before 5 a.m. and for sending me pictures of the hill. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, kindergarten registration opened today. And questions about our pre-K program should be directed to Dr. Barry Haynes. We are still waiting on the numbers from the governor. Uh, pre-K enrollment will open soon. This is going to be a lottery system. So I have a lot of really great things to share, going to start with our high school. Opening night for the High School Musical is tomorrow night, Thursday, and the show will run for three evenings. Showtime begins at 7 p.m. Tickets are available at the door. March is youth art month. We will be celebrating our successful art students and hopefully at the next meeting. Project Graduation Parent Committee is hosting the Harlem Wizards on March 15th, where the Wizards will play against our RP teachers. Tickets are still available for the event and all are welcome and encouraged to attend. A few weeks ago, the guidance department had an informational presentation on the early college program with over 70 attendees. We are excited to start our fifth cohort. Our fifth cohort of this program where our students earn an associate's degree of 60 college credits during their junior and senior year of high school. Our fifth cohort is going to happen. Yes, big thank you. Big recognition. Congratulations to our winter athletes in basketball and bowling who earned all league honors, first team all league, 10 second team all league and three honorable mentions. We are awaiting the results for our winter track and wrestling. We do have a little wrestling info right now. Uh, big announcement just came in, NJSIAA, uh, the state wrestling tournament. I have to give a big, big, big and help me with this. Congratulations to Teresa Zepatelli and Derek Rodriguez. Teresa and Derek are moving on to the state finals this weekend in Atlantic City. That is, that's huge. Um, as, as a former wrestling fan myself, I had brothers and children that wrestled. Uh, good luck to our scarlets and bucks. Elementary school, so as you know, and probably are aware, and if you're not, you need to ask your children who has been reading. March is National Reading Month. It's, it's being kicked off with the celebrating of Dr. Seuss's birthday on tomorrow, March 2nd, and the Read Across America Week. All three elementary schools are in the midst of celebrating Read Across America. Parents, make sure you ask your students who the guest speakers are, who's come to read to them. I was one of them. Local enforcement ag- against uh, drugs is our LED program. It began again in each elementary school this week. It's where local police officers begin teaching lessons to our fifth and sixth graders about drug awareness and avoidance, which fosters their safety. Thank you to our police department. Uh, Roosevelt School, little bit tidbits of information, the pre-K through first grade students received toothbrushes and toothpaste along with fun activities that recognize children's National Dental Health Month. And the PTA at Roosevelt, big thank you for the third through sixth graders had an assembly with a published author. Lincoln School dental mental, uh, medical students came to speak to their kindergarten. And a big thing happening there, March 9th, sixth grade versus volunteer Lincoln School staff for a basketball game. And we have last but not least, Grant School, the sixth grade. I attended their wax museum. It was a huge, huge success. Students selected a person from history to research and perform as they were they. This was fantastic. Students at Grant School also have an upcoming production, Jukebox Time Machine. And I'm happy to share that those students attended the high school dress rehearsal. And that concludes my superintendent's report. Thank you.
Dr. Bender, can I just say one thing?
Yes.
Um, I also wanted to thank the Buildings and Grounds Department for an amazing job um, yesterday in clearing the snow. But also with the recent pipes that burst at Lincoln, um, working 24/7 to try to get those rooms ready for the teachers. And I greatly appreciate um, Mike's assistance and Tony's assistance. So thank you so much.
Okay, uh, Mr. Egan, uh, would you like to add anything to your state monitor's report?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Just for the board's information and the public. Uh, we all noted the governor uh, on Tuesday uh, presented his budget message. Uh, what that means to us is that, and not just us, uh, but every district in the state. By tomorrow, but close to business, or the latest Friday, uh, each district will uh, receive detailed lists about how much state aid they're getting and, and how much it will be restricted. It's essential information so that the, the districts can individually now prepare their budgets uh, for the following year. But for Ridgefield Park, there's an additional uh, element which is, it's going to be very important. And that has to do with the um, preschool and uh, early childhood uh, situation. We have to see um, how much money is going to be allocated um, to us. I, I believe it's going to be enough to expand the preschool uh, program. Adding three additional classrooms. I've already contacted the uh, county business administrator um, because there would be a rule, uh, requirement for him uh, to be involved in the, to ensure that the, the future spaces w- will meet all uh, educational needs. Uh, so we're going in the right direction on it. Uh, we will have um, I'll have more information on that uh, for the next board meeting. Uh, but, but it looks, it, it's, it, I think it'll be positive for Ridgefield Park. Uh, secondly, um, uh, with the uh, part of preparing the budget, uh, the impact for Little Ferry to prepare their budget, it has to do with the um, the cost of the, the um, two, two elements. One is the, the cost of transportation, but the other one is the uh, tuition cost. Um, and I, I, I think we're talking with the, uh, with Carrie, uh, a meeting is being set up that for representatives of both organizations to sit down and, and uh, come to an agreement so that, which, which is fair to both communities uh, moving forward. Because that will al- also be not very necessary uh, for those costs to be properly recorded, not only uh, in our budget, but also in the budget of uh, Little Ferry.
Mr. Egan, that meeting is set for Friday.
You set it up already, right?
Yes.
Very good. Uh, because the time is right because we the, the governor gave it his speech and we're getting the numbers. But there, there's a time element involved that we still have to have our budget finished, approved by the board and submitted to the county, well, submitted to the county before being approved by the board, but definitely approved by the board. Um, so we can move forward with uh, meeting all the details from the required by the state. But I think we'll all go, it's all going in the right direction and everything. We can do all that. So. Uh, so, uh, so it's my report for now. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions for the state monitor? Very, thank you very much, Mr. Egan. So we are going to move to public comments. Trustee Rodriguez, if you can read the guidelines.
For today, for tonight's meeting, there will be two public comment sessions, one on agenda and one off agenda items. There is a sign up sheet on the podium. We'll call your name in the order that you sign in. Each member of the public will have five minutes to speak during each comment period. Time cannot be transferred to one, to other individuals. The public comment period will be one hour for on agenda items and one hour for non-agenda items. The board will now entertain public comment. Please permit your name, mailing address, and to keep your comments brief to allow sufficient time for other members of the public if they wish. Thank you for your cooperation and support.
Mr. Santos?
Susan DeSantis, 15 Homestead Place, um, 1213. Um, why is there extra money being spent above the $23,000?
I can answer that. Um, so for any superintendent search uh, process, the advertising fees are separate. And so there were about six packages. We picked uh, package number two, which is listed on their website uh, with the additional um, added on package. It's 520.
Doesn't the advertisement go out to the entire um, public? To all superintendents or people wanting to be superintendent?
No, there isn't such a directory that it would go out to. It goes out to on certain websites, educational websites, superintendent websites. It goes out on H, HYA. Um, I'm not in education right now. I don't have the list in front of me, but it's on their website, all the different organizations that it goes out to.
So this isn't being published in newspapers and educational?
Not in educational publications. That's what we're paying for. It's actually very expensive to advertise. And those, I would imagine that the district reserves is right. It's also posted in the newspaper or we get to put it on our website.
So you're targeting specific ethnic groups, but not targeting other ethnic groups?
I'm assuming you're talking about the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents and the Association of Black Superintendents and Administrators. Those two organizations do not require you to be of any ethnic background. Those two organizations are dedicated to improving the educational outcomes for individuals of Latino background and also African-American background. And I'm assuming that because they're superintendents, they're interested in improving the educational outcomes of all students.
Well, you have a scene, uh, you're paying um, $3,400 or $520 to advertise to Latino and um, black superintendents? What about other ethnic groups?
So, the 3,400 goes out to the major publications. These two additional ones, given the demographics in this town, we thought that was particularly important. But if you know of others, of other associations of superintendents and you'd like to submit that, we can also look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You have anybody to promote? Mr. Rano, you're muted. Nancy Serrano, you're muted. We have anybody else to promote? I'm sorry? I guess we scared her, scared her away. Should we give it a minute? Last time we, we closed it, there were a couple of people who complained that we closed it too soon. If anyone wishes to speak, now is your chance. The portal is open for you to raise your hand and you'll be elevated. All right. As always, you're welcome to contact building principals and administrators and the board as a whole, if you have questions for the board. Oh, we have one person.
Hello. Hi, good evening, Maria Escobar, 80 Orchard Street.
Come, welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that the, there's going to be a link sent out tomorrow for the parents to also participate in the candidates for the superintendent position. Is that what I, from what I understand? Or is it specific, or is it like a specific group of parents?
No, there are individual meetings set up all of next week with specific groups like the PTA and the CPAC and groups that we identified. However, I was trying to highlight the two meetings that are available to the general public, one on Wednesday, which is in person, one on Thursday, which is virtual. More information about both of those options will be sent via school messenger tomorrow, and then will also be available on our website. If either of those options work for you, we also have the ability, you'll have the ability to fill out a survey online. That link will also be sent via school messenger.
Okay, great. But if you are part of the PTA, you are able to participate in the one that includes the PTA parents, or is that for the presidents of the PTA?
That's a very good question. We will get back to you on that, but you, the main one that you'll get to participate is as a parent slash public, a member of the public. So, I would imagine that the PTA ones are going to be with either PTA leadership from each school, but I'm not completely sure right now. I will check in on that.
That will be great. Thank you so much. And the link for the general public will be sent out to all the parents?
Yes, there will be email blast going out to the public, and I'm assuming we'll probably put it on the website as well.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you for your call.
Have a great evening, thank you.
Anybody else? All right. I guess we'll move on to resolutions. Faculty and Programs, trustee Kraft, could you move?
I'd like to move 1001 to 1006. I'll second. I'm sorry, it's 1007. 1001 to 1007.
Are there any questions on Faculty and Programs, FP 1001 to 10.07? Seeing none? Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros, you're required to abstain on 10.03.
Okay, so, yes to everything else.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Ms. Valles?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Buildings and Grounds, trustee Cooney?
There's none. Good job. I have nothing to pass.
Tough crowd. Finance and Insurance, trustee Gomes?
I shall move FI 1201 to 1213.
Second. Are there any questions on finance resolutions, 12.01 to 12.13? Seeing none? Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes, on all but 1213.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Abstention on 12.07 and 12.08?
Of course.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Valles?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Consent agenda, trustee Cooney?
Resolution 13.01, I shall move?
Second.
Are there any questions on CR 13.01?
Yes, I just want to make a brief comment on our use of facilities. The district has many, many repairs that need to be done over the summer and off schedule, and our policies and regulations need to be tightened up in the area of use of facilities. So, the, the policy committee really has spent an enormous amount of time over the past year almost, trying to update these policies and trying to make them equitable, both for the people that serve our kids, but also for the building, the district, the taxpayers. Use of our fields, use of our buildings, cost money to repair, to wear and tear. And so, we're really taking a good look at how our facilities are used, who's using them, and whether it's beneficial to the district or not. So, these are being approved, but we will be looking at tightening things up to follow in line with our policy and our regulations. So, I just wanted to make that comment moving forward.
Any other comments or questions?
I just have a comment in regards to policy. In our policy meeting, February was, no, it was in January, the recommendation was to have a separate agenda item for policy. And I just wanted to know, what is, is that recommendation going, what's the status on that? Are we going to have a separate agenda item for policy?
So, do we need to, does the board need to make a vote to separate policy from Faculty and Programs? And have a separate category, or is that something that we can do as practice going forward?
I was actually thinking about that and having a category at the beginning called general, where we might be able to put policy into. And I was looking at some other districts. I guess I can, I can get back to you on that. Great question, because I thought the same thing.
Mr. District, do you have any feedback for us?
I do. I believe, if I have to pull up your policy, I believe your agenda is set forth by policy. So, you may have to amend your policy to add it as a separate line item, but I have to check your policy.
When that policy adjustment, do we put it under Faculty and Programs or under Policy?
So, you can amend it to create a separate, if you'd like, a separate area called policy, if you'd want. It's really up to the board. I'm just saying that if you want to amend your agenda, I believe your agenda is set by policy. So, you can do amend your policy to amend it how you see, so see fit, or how, and I prefer to just pretend how you see so fit.
I think we looked at it in the policy committee, and we, there is no agenda in our policy, and so, we were, we did talk about putting forth just policy items as policy, as opposed to as part of Faculty and Programs.
You're right, I stand corrected. It says agenda items, so it is left, it is left ambiguous for the board and obviously your board secretary to make this determination.
So, so, we don't need a motion?
You do not. It's up to the, so, my recommendation is the board give its preference to the board secretary. So, when the board secretary sets the agenda, again, I would get input from your superintendent as well. You do not need, it's by, again, since your policy is very broad, I'm looking at it now just as agenda items. How that, what, how you categorize those is up to the board's preference, again, and then the board secretary will set the agenda with obviously input from your superintendent.
Thank you, sir. Personnel? Oh, we should probably vote on that first.
For the consent agenda, Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros, you're required to abstain on this?
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Valles?
Yes.
Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Trustee Orth, could you move personnel?
I shall move 14.01 through 14.04.
Second.
Second.
Are there any questions on personnel 14.01 to 14.04? Seeing none? Mrs. Orth?
Yes.
Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Cathcart?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Valles?
Yes.
And President Martinez?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
We can move to citizens' comments, off agenda item? Do you have anybody to elevate? Do we have anybody to elevate?
Hello?
Yes, hello. Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm sorry. Yes, hi. Good evening. Christina Ramos, 32 Teneck Road. I, first off, I want to just say welcome back to, Ms. Bender, Dr. Bender. Sorry, I haven't been able to attend in person, or was there your first day back at the board meeting, you know, went through a stick patch here at home, still recovering. So, welcome back. You look good in that seat, like you've always belonged there.
Thank you.
I have a, well, I have a few concerns, so I'm going to try to be quick. I would like to know, I know, Dr. Bender, you just came back and you're, you seem to be hitting the ground running, but I do want to mention my concern of the students at the high school and a lot of the bullying that's happening. You know, I'm always, you know, they are fighting for, you know, this and that, and, you know, although I, you know, I am fortunate, I want to say I'm fortunate, I don't have children who go through that. However, I can't seem to turn a blind eye to, I see myself. I see, seen videos, very disturbing videos lately. A lot of familiar faces on those videos, and I want to know if the school plans to, the district plans to have assemblies more frequently. I mean, I think that I've heard of maybe assembly, but I don't think it's happening as often as they should be happening. I mean, I mean, this is some horrible footage that I've been seeing, I mean, bad kids standing aside, watching videotaping, you know, instigating. I mean, it's just terrible, and it breaks my heart for these children that have to go through this. I mean, these kids screaming, stop, you know, I said, I'm done with this, and they keep getting hit, and the, and I mean, and the kids around them, like cheering them on, I mean, it's so disgusting, it just, it really is. I mean, it brought me to tears when I saw the last video. It was really, really bad. And I'm just hoping that they can do something, because, you know, these kids, I mean, I mean, I don't even know what to say anymore. I mean, I've seen some really bad things. A lot of these girls, a lot of these boys, boys specifically putting their hands a lot on, on girls. And I think it needs to be addressed. I don't know if it's something they can do on a weekly basis, I mean, I just need some spoken about, because there's, I don't think there's enough, you know, this is not being addressed often enough with the, with every, every student in the high, junior and senior, junior and high school. Specific, more juniors, junior high school. It's terrible, terrible. And I feel so sorry for these kids that are going through this. They shouldn't have to be going through this. I can't imagine them waking up, having to feel like they are faith, what, what, what their day is going to look like. So, yeah, that's one concern, and I was wondering if they had any, have you guys had any plans of putting any assemblies together for students?
Mrs. Ramos, I know that this high school, middle school has SEL put in place. However, I am really concerned with what you just said. I, I don't know if you shared your concerns with the building administrators or the counselors, but I would really like to have a conversation with you as well tomorrow sometime, because hearing this is upsetting for me as well.
Yeah, and I know that you're back, and you're new back, and I definitely do want to, I mean, I, I have, I have footage, like, I didn't even know what to do with it, like, I just feel like it's my responsibility to do something and say something, you know, again, my children are not involved, but, you know, this is not about just me caring about my own, my own children. I want all our children in our district to feel safe. I want all of them to feel, not to feel scared to go to school.
Well, I want to personally thank you for actually bringing this up and to our attention, because it is a serious matter and it needs to be addressed. I really would like to further this conversation with you, okay?
Yes.
Please, please, thank you.
And I just have one more question, just because I've seen it when I was driving down to the school, that new little parking area that they made, it doesn't seem like it's working out that well. When it's bad weather, it's flooded, constantly flooded, and I'm just wondering if we're going to do anything to address those issues. I'm sure we paid a lot of money to have that done. Is there any, you know, thing that we can do to fix those, those problems so they won't get flooded, because the whole purpose of having that done and spending all this money was to have extra parking spaces? fix those problems so they won't get flooded? Because the whole purpose of having that done and spending all this money was to have extra parking spaces, but if they cannot be used and I don't know. I guess it was just a waste of money.
Mrs. Ramos, if I can jump in here, from what I understand, the lot, that parking lot that you're referring to is not ours, it's the town's. But I think that if I understand you correctly, and I have not seen this yet myself, because just being back, I haven't been here for that kind of a rain. I think that this is already being looked into between the town and our buildings and grounds. So again, you know, thank you for bringing it up. I appreciate it. But I just wanted to let you know that we don't own that lot, but I understand that your concern is that it might be.
Thank you. And one other question is about the pre-K. I was a little concerned. I had to catch up on the video, the last board meeting by, on, by looking at the video and I was a little concerned to see, State Monitor didn't really have much answers to who's leading the pre-K program from now on. Do we have any strict guidelines of, per the state of how it should be, you know, run and by who, so we won't run into an issue where we lose our grants? Because it's not, we're not doing, holding up or following procedure from our end. Can we have a little bit more information and how that's going? And I believe that Dr. Haynes is going to be doing this, following through with the pre-K, but just one confirmation, how much of, is he going to be responsible for overseeing this program?
Okay, I'll answer that. Last meeting that you saw, Mr. Egan did announce it and then I confirmed tonight that Mr. Dr. Haynes is responsible. And also I understand that Mr. Egan is also helping to contribute with the financial components.
Dr. Bender, who will be doing the lottery?
Great question. So Ms. Thompson is collecting the names. There are students that come to us for kindergarten and she's been very good about recommending that if they don't meet the age for kindergarten, she then suggests that they put their name in for pre-K. Again, that is a lottery system and more information will be going out on that as well. But it is a lottery, so it's just, if you register, it does not mean that you're going to be accepted into the pre-K.
So how would the community be aware that there is a lottery system and a possible, possibility for their child to obtain a spot in the pre-K?
Well, off the top of my head, that I can say that I'm sure that it's going to go out in an email blast or a text message blast through our, the way that we communicate, school messenger. Other than that, I know that we have it, or we used to, and I'm going to guess, I believe that Ms. Thompson is always on top of these things, that she's had it in front of the municipal building, that there's an ad for kindergarten registration, so I'll, I'll double check on that and get back to you.
I just want to make sure that we're going to reach out to those community members that live in the community.
Sure, they need to know.
Do not know about the messenger, who are not, who don't have kids in the system and don't read the signs in front of the municipal building.
We don't really have a local paper anymore, right? So the Patriot is gone. I will get back to you. Dr. Haynes will have to have information to share. Thank you.
Would it be possible to also have it on, you know, we have three or four Facebook pages that are Richfield Park specific? Is it possible for us to put that contact information on there?
Yes, we can definitely do it that way as well. All the social media that goes out. We can ask. We have a great relationship, I would like to believe, with RP Moms and they might be able to help us by posting. But anyone who has, watches our board meetings, we can have it on the website. There are various ways, but I think that sometimes if you have a pre-K student, I think they come and find us rather quickly.
If I may, if I may just add to it, just, everything's going to hinge upon the exact numbers that we get either tomorrow or Friday as to how big our program will be. And I strongly recommend, and I've had discussions about this, that once we have these numbers and we have a finite number as to how many children that we can support at this time, yes, I totally support doing a lottery for any additional people. And I think, and all the districts I've been associated with, that's what they did. I'm sure that'll be happening with this district. And, and yes, we want to get that process going as soon as we can so that the parents can make plans for September. So we are on top of it. We are, I'm involved in it. I want it done. I'm sure just like everybody on the board wants it done. We will be forthcoming with the information.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. And thank you, Ms. Ramos.
Thank you.
I guess I'm just clarifying that once we get the information from the state that we'll finally be presented with a plan for preschool. Once we know how much money is going to be allocated to the program and how many kids we support, the hope is that we'll have an official plan so we can plan accordingly.
I know you phrase it as a question, but that should be a statement. Right?
My question was going to be, when will we get the plan?
Okay, do we have anybody else to elevate? We have somebody in person. All right, we'll elevate the people online. Ms. Schmidt, good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Actually, I raised my hand right before all that conversation about the pre-K with all those questions I was going to ask. So thank you, Berlinda, for asking the question I wanted to ask. And I just, I mean, in addition to that, I guess we're looking for the timeframe for when we'll know more about the pre-K. That way, I mean, it seems as though odds are, we're not going to have that many students other than kids who maybe didn't get into the kindergarten and really need, need the services that they'll get into the pre-K this year. So with a, with a child who's going to be, you know, eligible for pre-K, I'm hoping that we're going to know sooner than later, so we can make the right plans. And the lottery, I think we need to be careful with what we call a lottery. How we, how we get the message out there to everyone. I agree it should be on Facebook, on these group pages, everything else is. And in the past, it is no secret that it's been called a lottery for years and the first people to know about it are people that work within the school districts. And they get their kids in before even the general public knows that there's even an opportunity to apply for pre-K. So I just wanted to put that out there. I know from experience that most people are not aware that we even had, you know, free services even for special needs children. You know, people were given the privilege of knowing that because they worked for the school district and they got their kids in first. So I hope that we're, we're going to get the message out there to everybody and then make it a true lottery. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. The board will follow up.
Thanks.
Mr. Santos?
Susan DeSantis. You could have all also advertised it on the town bulletin board. I'm going to try this again. Is Dr. Haynes pre-K certified to run this program? And is he handling all the meetings that are supposed to take place and fulfilling all the requirements needed?
Okay, Mrs. Santos, I'm going to try to answer this as best as I can, being back and this was a project that was started by Dr. Haynes. I don't have all those answers for you, but perhaps I can have him contact you directly to answer those kind of questions. Because this is something that is really not in my wheelhouse right now or under my jurisdiction because it's a new program, it's something that has funding from the state. And I'm really not familiar with what's been the plan for this.
I'm understanding he's hardly ever here, so I don't know how he's doing this. By recollection was, Ms. Steeman said that we were already awarded a million dollars for next year, so I don't know why. There's a confusion on that. Also, Ricardo, the board committee list was supposed to be on the agenda so the public can see who's on what committees and you're supposed to resolution it and approve it.
We put that on this, it's on the website. Can we put that on this?
When and how was the criteria set for the search firm? What was the criteria? How is the survey giving the ability for multiple submissions? I don't understand that because at the end you could resubmit again. Also, there's no ability for comments. Everything is multiple choice, which really kind of limits anybody making any suggestions or bring up any good points. And Christina, with the phones. I've brought this up several times before. These kids walk around all day long filming each other, filming the teachers. There's a policy without no phones in this school. All the kids have equipment that they can use. They have laptops and it's not really necessary and it's not fair to other students. It's not fair to the teachers. And something really needs to be done about it. I brought it up a few times while you were gone, so I just want to mention that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Susan DeSantis?
Hi, Ed DeSantis, 15 Homestead Place. Ms. Ramos, she brought up some very good concerns. They are disturbing. I wouldn't want to be a kid now. I really wouldn't. We all make stupid things. We do them. They disappear after a while and kids today with the phones, I think those policies should be enforced. There really should be no reason to have phones open with the technology we have in the district. A main thing I wanted to say was thank you to Mrs. Grabstein for a very good audit report, for the hard work you do and the time you put in. It is very much appreciated. And one thing that's been great to hear is that the open discussion with the board. And then when somebody doesn't know an answer, they just say, I don't know, we're going to get back to you. That's a, that's a good answer, as long as you get back to everybody. So thank you all. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. DeSantis. We have somebody to elevate? Two people? Ms. Ramirez?
Hi, yes, Sharon Ramirez, 205 Overpack Avenue. How are you all?
How are you doing?
Doing good, doing good. So I just had a few comments and questions, mainly about the pre-K program for one. I think Mr. Egan is mistaken because we did receive the million dollar grant and it was for sixty-eight students, which I believe forty-five were going to be, forty-five positions, we're going to be going to lottery. And which is going to happen in March or April. So that, that's already been decided. It was for four additional or four classrooms total. Four classrooms total. How I know this is that I'm part of the ECAC committee, which was a meeting with Mrs. Steeman, which is a requirement of the grant. And since Mrs. Steeman has been removed from her position, we have not had a meeting. So as far as I know, nothing is happening with the pre-K program, which is very concerning, considering that that is putting a million dollars for our district in jeopardy as well as losing this program and also hurting, hurting the co-op, which has been a part of this community for, I believe it's fifty years at this point. So I, as I understand now, from what Dr. Bender mentioned, that all questions for pre-K will go to Dr. Haynes. That concerns me because as you know, I've brought it up at several meetings in the past with Dr. Haynes that he, and he would have everything directed towards Mrs. Steeman since he knew nothing about what was going on with the program. I'm not even sure, even though we were all at the meeting and we were all discussed about who's part of the ECAC committee. He has not reached out to any of us since it is required as part of the grant to have meetings with us. So that's also something that's, that's very concerning. This lottery, as discussed by Mrs. Steeman at one of the meetings, I believe it was in October. The October meeting right after we officially opened was that the lottery system was supposed to happen at the Elks. We were going to, we were already planning it, that it was going to be open to the entire community for everybody to be there. We were going to have, I think, believe the mayor was going to come to pull the names. Everybody can be there when it happens, so that there would be, there'd be total transparency. And again, we are now in March and there's been no, as Ms. Schmidt was just talking about, there's been no notification about what's happening. Those of you, us who are on the Facebook pages in Richfield Park are aware that a lot of parents are asking about the pre-K program since they know that one, that a free one is existing, a UPK program is existing in the town and there's nobody for them to reach out to. I have zero confidence in the fact that Dr. Haynes would be able to answer their questions or even reply to emails since he rarely does that anyway. And he's leaving in June, so, because we know he's not coming back, so I just, I just don't know the direction that this, that we're going here. So I'm very concerned about that and I hope that Dr. Haynes, if he is now officially the person, even though he has, there was no resolution or appointment, I hope that he will reach out to the ECAC committee. So we can, we can bring him up to speed since Mrs. Steeman is the only person in the town who is certified and has been going to these meetings and trainings. But hopefully he will get himself up to speed, but again, I'm doubtful of that. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, which was also, on the last meeting, there was something, a side note that was kind of brought up and I think it kind of went unnoticed and I was looking more into it since I had off last week and got to, got to do some more research. But there's a district policy nine one four zero about citizens advisory committees. And the ECAC would actually be a good example of that. But this was established in two thousand and two, from what I see in December. And we, we were living in, we didn't move into Richfield Park until two thousand and four and then we were out and back again. Since, and I've been involved, I've been involved parents since the beginning. And I've never heard of a committee like this. This is a committee that would help with all the mistrust between the, all the mistrust between the town and the board and the school. You have so many involved parents, so many parents that are willing to be involved, so many parents who are willing to help spread the word and help. So I really think that this is something that needs to be brought up again about the citizens advisory committee. And this is something that I am, I'm ready to push because I do think that this, this is a very important committee and something that could help between the transparency between the board and the community. Thank you so much for your time and if there's any comments you do have about the pre-K and Dr. Haynes and about what is there going to be the, the final say for the ECAC committee, for the people who have volunteered their time to meet and have the meetings that, that Mrs. Steeman religiously had scheduled every month and we would meet via Zoom. I mean, it's, we kind of feel like our input and our, our efforts were for nothing at this point. So thank you so much for your time and have a good evening.
Mrs. Ramirez for bringing that, asking those questions about the pre-K.
Mrs. Ramirez, for bringing that up, asking those questions about the pre-K, and we really do need some answers, and the community has every right to get these answers. The district policy that you were referring to, it is district policy 9140, citizen advisory committees. We did discuss it in our policy committee, and I did mention it at our, in the report. So as the chair of policy, I think that we need to, this is like a policy that would be more transparent, and we really, I recommend looking at the, this policy, and if it's, okay, with Dr. Bender, to somehow make this happen.
I'm sorry.
I mean, yes, I 100% agree, Dr., I hyper simply agree with you, Ms. Rodriguez, because, I mean, I have a lot to lose in this district and a lot to gain in this district. I have four children in the district, ranging from Roosevelt all through the high school, and there are so many parents that come to these meetings religiously, whether they're online or in person. There are so many parents on, online Facebook, who have lots of questions, love to be involved, and it's been no secret that I'm a huge supporter of our district and of our teachers, and I do feel that, that a committee would really help, and a diverse committee of people who are involved in the school and have, you know, children all over the place, Lincoln, Roosevelt, the pre-K program, the grant, the high school. So I do think that this would be a great program, I mean, a great committee to, to fast track.
Berlinda, weren't we, didn't we say we would have further discussion on that in the policy committee meeting, at the next policy committee meeting?
That was in our first meeting. We were going to have further discussion, and then we were discussing use of facilities, everything that was discussed in our, you know, on our agenda, and that meeting was two hours, but I, I, I think that my recommendation as a chair of policy is to put this on the top of our, for the next policy meeting.
Yep, I would agree.
I think we're all in agreement that more parent participation is important for the district. So thank you for bringing this up, Ms. Ramirez, and it clearly is on our radar, and so please hold our feet to the fire for follow-up in subsequent meetings.
Oh, I will, Dr. Martinez, thank you.
I know you will.
Have a good evening.
Dr. Bender would like to add something.
Okay.
Mrs. Ramirez, thank you again for bringing all of your questions up. I just want to let you know that I logged into the Strauss ESME website, where they give us guidance on these policies. The Strauss ESME, I'm sure you know, is written by lawyers, and they provide mandated policy to districts, they provide, tell us when the regulations or policies have to be adjusted. So I pulled up the 9140, and I'm going to be able to download it and provide it in advance to the policy committee. So I just want to let you know that, and I think that that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bender.
Thank you also for volunteering for that advisory committee, because given how many kids you have and how hard you work, it's appreciated your time.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'd like, I'd like to be involved.
Important, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Have anybody else to elevate? More? Good evening, Ms. Rafferty.
Good morning, good afternoon, I'm sorry, long day. I have a new address, 58 Yucatá Avenue. We're in the process of changing it on paper. So my question is, I was listening, I would like to know who's writing the curriculum right now, or who is in charge of the curriculum?
Okay, I'll take it from here. The, that is, Dr. Haynes, he's in charge of curriculum, instruction, and operations.
Now, I heard he's leaving in June. Is there already a new search for a new curriculum, I guess, director, or do you, or I'm not sure how that works after he leaves?
I'll comment that regardless of what happens in June, curriculum is something that was not spoken about enough in this district going back years, and that is clearly on the radar of this particular board. And so we will be making sure that there is somebody who is taking care of all the curriculum equipment that we bought, and making sure it's being put to good use, and that our teachers are getting the support they need. So this is on our radar, you know, taking baby steps.
Mrs. Rafferty? Yes?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. I just want to add to that, as far as the curriculum itself, I asked Dr. Haynes when I came back to please prepare a curriculum audit, and what that means is I'm asking him to let me know how he did in CUSAC. I want to report on CUSAC, I want to report where we have needs to be met yet, where we are successful, right, because with success, there may be areas that we can improve upon. And I'm also planning for September, more curriculum writing, and bringing in, hopefully, an organization that will help teachers in sciences are our hardest standards to unpack. And there is, there's a lot of plans that I have in my head that I'm sharing with Dr. Haynes, and, you know, pointing him in the direction. So I don't want you to think that it's left unattended. I am fully aware that we have a lot of needs in the district with the curriculum, and going forward on how to work with that as well.
Thank you for explaining that. I really appreciate it, Dr. Bender. My next question is, last year, there was a goal about your, the kitchen, the economic room, that, that one of the wonderful teacher leads, but it's sort of like, I'm not sure if anything happened. It was supposed to be updated. I don't know if this is going to happen this summer, or if it's on the back burner, I just would like to know.
I'm thrilled to share with you that we already have renderings of what our new culinary arts room is going to look like. I am, I cannot even tell you how happy I am. We also have two brand new science labs that are going to be underway this summer as well. There's going to be construction here in this building, so I think it was one of the trustees who mentioned, when we were speaking about building use, that, oh, we did award a contract. Okay, yeah, so the contract was awarded already now for the culinary arts room and the science labs, both, Ms. Grabstein, both of them. So there's going to be construction here. It's going to start, I believe, in the middle of June, beginning of June, beginning of June, construction will start upstairs, and it's being worked out with the family consumer science teacher, and the science teacher, and the supervisor as well. So, great question, I actually get to brag about it, so thank you for asking.
Thank you very much. I'm going to have a very happy granddaughter. She's been asking me constantly about both areas. Thank you.
Mrs. Rafferty, maybe sometime in the near future, I can share a picture of what we're anticipating.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Do we know how long that, I hate to ask this question, but construction takes for those rooms to be operational?
I believe August 18th was the deadline for the end of construction.
Thank you. Anybody else to elevate? Okay, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So I'm closing public comments, and then I also got a motion to close the meeting.
I make a motion to close the meeting?
Hold on a second. Have a good night, everybody.